Our support helps provide food, water, and other lifesaving assistance to those who need it most. As we look at the region in its entirety, it is crucial that the violence we are witnessing in Israel and Gaza does not spread further to the West Bank or elsewhere. The fragile situation along Israel’s northern border with Lebanon is concerning to all of us, and more than ever, regional escalation remains a real threat. It is our hope that neighboring countries are not brought even deeper into this conflict. To be clear, Mr. President, Canada supports the right of Israelis and Palestinians to live side by side in peace and in security. Key steps must be taken to ensure that we take this past and this terrorist, ending, ending this terrorist attack after we have had the courage to name it and ending the power of terrorist organizations in the region has to be one of the steps that we can all agree needs to be taken. This is why I’m urging all of you to support this amendment, which brings balance to the resolution and names what must be named. What we are proposing is factual and it is fair. If our amendment is adopted, it will allow many member states to support the text as a whole, including Canada. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Canada for his statement, and I now invite Pakistan, the distinguished representative of Pakistan, to take the floor.
I thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, the text that has been proposed by the Arab and the Islamic countries in L-25 is a humanitarian text. It seeks three simple things: one, an immediate cessation of hostilities, a ceasefire; second, the provision of urgent humanitarian relief to the besieged people of Gaza; and third, a stipulation against the further displacement of the 2 million people in Gaza, trapped between Israel’s bombs and its tanks. Mr. President, the co-sponsors of L-25 have been circumspect in the language that has been used in document L-25. The document has not condemned Israel by name, and this has been a deliberate act of moderation on the part of the sponsors. Because if one were to see the situation that is on the ground with Israeli bombs that are there for 20 days against the helpless Palestinian people, with 7,000 men, women, and small children, half of them children, killed by Israel in the last 20 days, 17,000 injured, 1.1 million Palestinians displaced. The enormity of the crimes that are being committed by Israel against the Palestinian people are so great and enormous that it is amazing that when my friend from Canada insists on naming the organization Hamas, that he does not feel the need for the equity and balance and fairness for which Canada is so well-known. He does not feel the need to name Israel for killing 7,000 Palestinians and injuring 17,000. Only Hamas. Is this balance? He says what needs to be named has to be named. We believe Israel needs to be named if you are fair, if you are equitable, if you are just. That started this. When you push a people into the corner, they will respond. This is what the Secretary-General said. It did not say. It did not happen in a vacuum. Happened in a vacuum. And look at the reaction that was, that came from the Israeli representative, insulting the Secretary-General, calling for his resignation. They can’t face the truth. They can’t face justice. They can’t face the fact that the crime, that the crime has originated with the Israelis. The Israeli occupation is the original sin in this case. It is not what happened on the 7th of October. That is a proximate cause, but the real cause is the occupation of Palestine. Mr. President, it was not our purpose to name anybody in this text. My colleague from Canada says, “Well, the hostages, we don’t speak of the hostages.” The text does speak in balanced terms for the release of all who are held against their will. But not only the Israeli hostages, also the Palestinians. They have the same rights. They are human beings too. And if you only focus on your kids and kin in Israel and forget the Palestinians because they are different, are they people of a lesser god? I think if Canada was fair, if Canada was really equitable, it would agree either to name everybody, both sides who are guilty of having committed crimes, or it would not name either, as we chose in L-25 not to name anybody. But if the Canadian amendment passes, Pakistan will withdraw its co-sponsorship of L-25, and we will submit an amendment to the text of the resolution, which will strongly condemn all indiscriminate attacks by Israel, the occupying power, against the Palestinian civilian population. That, I hope we will have the opportunity at the appropriate time to do so. But my appeal to all member states here is not to support the one-sided Canadian amendment, the unequal Canadian amendment, the unfair Canadian amendment. We urge you not to show that you are biased against the Palestinian people who have suffered 50 years of occupation, that you are even-handed, that you will either name both or you will name neither in this draft resolution. Our purpose is to stop the fighting. The fact that we have reports today that the Israelis have gone on the ground into Gaza, which will escalate the fighting. It is all the more reason for this General Assembly to pass a resolution which is unequivocal in calling for a halt to the fighting, to the hostilities, and that is what we must do this afternoon. I thank you, Mr. President.
We have heard the last speaker in the explanation of vote before the vote. As decided this morning, I wish to recall that a two-thirds majority of the members present and voting is required for the adoption of the draft resolution and any amendments thereto. Before proceeding to take a decision on draft resolution A/ES10/L25 in accordance with Rule 90 of the Rules of Procedure, the Assembly shall first take a decision on draft amendment A/ES10/L26 submitted by Canada. We now turn to draft amendment contained in document A/ES10/L26. A recorded vote has been requested. We shall now begin the voting process. Those in favor of draft amendment please signify. Those against? Abstentions.
The General Assembly is now voting on draft amendment A/ES10/L26. Will all delegations confirm that the votes on L-26 are accurately reflected on the screen? The voting has been concluded. Please lock the machine.
Should I read it out?
Yes, but before the, so, this is short of two-thirds majority, so it’s rejection.
It’s rejection.
So, please read this, and then the last line, “Having failed to obtain a two-thirds majority of members present voting, the last amendment is not adopted.”
Okay.
The result of the vote is as follows: in favor, 88; against, 55; abstentions, 23. Having failed to obtain a two-thirds majority of members present and voting, draft amendment A/ES10/L26 is not adopted. Since draft amendment A/ES10/L26 is not adopted, we shall proceed to take a decision on draft resolution A/ES10/L25. The Assembly will now take a decision on draft resolution A/ES10/L25, entitled “Protection of civilians and upholding legal and humanitarian obligations.” A recorded vote has been requested. We shall now begin the voting process. Those in favor of draft resolution please signify. Those against? Abstentions.
The General Assembly is now voting on draft resolution A/ES10/L25, entitled “Protection of civilians and upholding legal and humanitarian obligations.” Will all delegations, before I lock the machine, will all delegations confirm that their votes are accurately reflected on the screen? The voting has been completed. Please lock the machine.
The result of the vote is as follows: in favor, 120; against, 14; abstentions, 45. Draft resolution A/ES10/L25 is adopted. Before giving the floor for explanations of vote after the vote, may I remind delegations that explanations of vote are limited to 10 minutes and should be made by delegations from their seats. I now call on the distinguished representative of Iceland.
Mr. President, we are convening this emergency special session against the backdrop of another great tragedy for millions of Israelis and Palestinians and a disappointing impasse in the Security Council. Iceland supported the amendment proposed by Canada, which would have added a much-needed context and balance to the resolution. Iceland regrets that the amendment did not pass. Without the inclusion of those essential elements, Iceland decided to abstain on the resolution tabled by Jordan despite supporting many of its key elements, notably on the humanitarian front. It is unfortunate that consensus could not be reached on a resolution to address the grave humanitarian situation and the need for concrete action to protect civilians and facilitate the safe delivery of humanitarian assistance. Mr. President, Iceland joins the calls for humanitarian force to facilitate the safe delivery of humanitarian aid throughout Gaza. Safe and unimpeded humanitarian access must be ensured. Civilians and civilian objects, medical personnel, and humanitarian workers and assets must be protected. We deplore the immense suffering of innocent civilians and the thousands, including women, children, and UN personnel that have been killed. We are alarmed by the impact of mass evacuations of civilians in Gaza. We must prevent further escalation for the sake of Israelis, Palestinians, and the wider region. Across the world, this continuous violence is fuming the flames of hate, antisemitism, Islamophobia, and racism. Mr. President, Iceland is grateful to the UN Secretary-General for his tireless efforts to ensure the urgent delivery of lifesaving humanitarian assistance to the civilian population of Gaza. We echo his calls for humanitarian aid to the civilian population of Gaza, so desperately in need of food, water, shelter, and medical care. We welcome the opening of the Rafa Crossing, and we commend the humanitarian personnel working night and day to facilitate the urgent delivery of humanitarian assistance. More aid is needed, and it is needed now. Time is running out. Iceland has responded to UN emergency appeals with an additional contribution to UNRWA, our longstanding humanitarian partner and the lead UN agency mandated with supporting Palestine refugees. We urge other donors to step up their support to UNRWA’s critical frontline delivery of aid to the people of Gaza. To conclude, Mr. President, we must break out of this vicious cycle of violence and work towards a sustainable political solution. The international parameters for a long-term, sustainable solution to the conflict are clear: a two-state solution based on international law, with Israel and Palestine living side by side in peace and security and mutual recognition. Even in the midst of crisis, we must not give in to violence and hate. We must not lose hope, even when peace seems unrealistic and distant. We must put the peace process back on track. Otherwise, we run the risk of perpetuating the cycle of violence and humanitarian conditions deteriorating even further to the detriment of everyone. I thank you, Mr. President.
Distinguished delegates, can I please prevail upon you to keep your seats so that you can listen to other speakers make their presentations? We are still in the midst of the debate. Thank you for your cooperation. I should like to thank the distinguished representative of Iceland, and I now invite the distinguished representative of Poland to take the podium.
Mr. President, materialism has always been the foundation of Poland’s activity at the United Nations, and our actions have been guided by the principles contained in the Charter of the United Nations. Therefore, we fully support all international efforts aimed at restoring peace. Poland efforts, Poland follows with great concern the current devastating crisis in the Middle East. We know very well the consequences of war, invasion, and terror, which are felt for generations. Now it is critical time. We should make every effort to reach the cessation of hostilities and to return to a diplomatic path of this dispute. Mr. President, Poland decided to abstain on this resolution as we believe that the path to peace requires including several key elements missing in the text. First, the submitted proposal lacks a clear condemnation of Hamas’ attack on the 7th of October this year. Terrorism aiming at the civilian population cannot be tolerated under any circumstances, and this is why Poland condemned the brutal attacks on civilians carried out by Hamas on its very onset. Second, it should be stated clearly that Israel, just as any other state, has the right to defend itself and its citizens in compliance with the international law and international humanitarian law. Third, and lastly, we also, we are also joining all those calling for immediate and unconditional release of all hostages taken by Hamas. Among them, there is one Polish citizen, a distinguished historian working for Yad Vashem Institute. We expect Mr. Alex Danzig to return home safe and sound. Nevertheless, we largely agree with the humanitarian provisions of the presented resolution. For decades, Poland has been involved in humanitarian development and aid projects in the Middle East with particular focus on Palestine and Lebanon. Poland’s yearly contribution to UNRWA, which has been decided to supplement with fresh 1 million Polish zloty, are a clear proof of our wider political commitment to the stabilization of the Middle East. In this context, we were satisfied to see the opening of the Rafa Crossing last week and the first convoys of aid trucks entering Gaza. However, the flow of humanitarian aid into Strip must continue and raise. We strongly believe that the lives of civilians on both sides must be protected in accordance with international law and international humanitarian law. The nearly complete blockade of the Gaza Strip, which hinders the imports of food, water, medicine, and electricity, must end immediately. The strategy of collective punishment that puts civilians at risk is a wrong one. We should make every effort to reach the cessation of hostilities and to return to a diplomatic path of this dispute. We fully believe that within the UN, we as international community should be able to develop a common position on this extremely important issue. Otherwise, escalation and spreading of the conflict may have devastating and long-lasting consequences. In this vein, Poland remains open to constructive cooperation and committed to a negotiated, viable two-state solution built upon the internationally agreed parameters. And I thank you.
I should like to thank the distinguished representative of Poland, and I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Belgium.
Merci.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, Belgium voted for this resolution, but we deeply regret that certain elements that we had promoted and which are fundamental were not included in the final text. The reasons why we voted in favor are nevertheless numerous. One, humanitarian access in Gaza must be guaranteed, and all types of obstacles must be eliminated. Belgium, like the rest of the European Union, supports the establishment of humanitarian corridors and pauses, hoping that this could lead to humanitarian ceasefires in response to the calls from the United Nations. This is the primary reason for our vote. Secondly, our international action is, as you know, based on respect for international law and international humanitarian law in this particular issue, which is particularly complex and emotional, as in others. As the Secretary-General rightly stated, even wars have rules. We have therefore expressed our support to the general goals of this text while being well aware of what it is lacking. The protection of civilians, all civilians, must be our primary concern, and they must be targeted with increased efforts on our part, even if they remember, remain the primary responsibility of the parties to the conflict. Here, I wish to recall that Belgium does not urge the attempts for a total blockade, nor forced displacements, nor the use of civilians as shield, human shields, whether it be in this context or in any other. Fourthly, we regret nevertheless that this resolution that we consider to be primarily humanitarian in nature did not take into account the following elements: a clear condemnation of the terrorist attacks perpetrated in Israel by Hamas and the Islamic Jihad. Terrorism must be fought in all circumstances. The ES acts could not pass in silence. They should have been condemned explicitly in the Security Council. Since this was not possible, the current resolution could have denounced them to a greater extent. It will be the focus of greater attention on our part now. Belgium also calls for the unconditional release without delay of all hostages. Such an act, which runs counter to international humanitarian law, could have been dealt with in a more explicit manner, and I commend those who are currently working to free the hundreds of innocents currently detained by these terrorist groups. Belgium recognizes unequivocally the right of Israel to defend itself. This incontestable right under international law must be carried out in respect of international humanitarian law, and this should also be included in an explicit manner. In conclusion, I wish to recall that we do not consider that the security of Israel In conclusion, I wish to recall that we do not consider that the security of Israel and the legitimate aspirations of the Palestinian people to be mutually exclusive, rather the opposite. This situation once again shows the absolute necessity of defining a political horizon towards a lasting solution and a viable solution to this conflict which would guarantee Israel the possibility to live in peace and in security and that would achieve the right to self-determination for the Palestinians. Therefore, it is necessary to create the right conditions to lead to a negotiated solution. And this is what is the focus of the Peace Day effort, which has the full support of my country, Belgium. Diplomatic efforts must currently focus on de-escalating the tensions so as to avoid further human suffering. Belgium commends and supports all those efforts undertaken to avoid further exacerbation of the situation in the region. This is where the Foreign Minister of Belgium is currently in the Middle East and is multiplying his contacts in the region so that he can hear what is going on there. We are bringing a message of dialogue, dialogue which much move through truth, peace and respect for international law. I thank you for your attention.
I would like to thank the distinguished representative of Belgium and I now invite the distinguished representative of France to take the floor.
Mr. President, France voted in favor of the resolution presented by Jordan on behalf of the ERG Group because nothing could justify the suffering of civilians. All of the victims warrant our compassion and all of the lives are equally worthwhile. There is no hierarchy. We have to work collectively to set up humanitarian truce which could lead eventually to a ceasefire because the situation in Gaza is catastrophic. We must guarantee safe, rapid and unhindered humanitarian access but also lasting in the Gaza Strip. And that’s why President Emmanuel Macron announced today an appeal to form a humanitarian coalition for Gaza and France sent a new aircraft carrying humanitarian aid for the population of Gaza. France nonetheless regrets that many essential elements are missing in the text. First of all, a condemnation of the terrorist attack carried out by Hamas as well as other terrorist groups against Israel. Our assembly must also call for the release of hostages. Many countries here have already been victims of that kind of blind terrorism, France is among them. I would also recall that Hamas doesn’t represent at all its population, quite the opposite. It is a catastrophe for the aspirations of Palestinians, a state that will serve them. Israel has the right to defend itself and the duty to do so in respect of international law and in particular respecting international humanitarian law and therefore to protect the civilian population. France underscores that the adoption of this text cannot replace the efforts of the Security Council and the decisions that the Security Council must now adopt. Mr. President, we have the duty to prevent a worsening of the situation throughout the entire region. France is committed to preventing an extension of this conflict. And lastly, we must act in order to recreate the conditions for a political solution which could meet the legitimate aspirations of Palestinians and Israelis to live in peace. The conditions of this lasting peace are well known. They are indispensable guarantees brought to Israel for its security and a state for the Palestinians. The only viable solution is a two-state solution and that is why France voted in favor of the draft resolutions presented by Brazil and by the United States at the Security Council. And that is why it hopes that the Security Council will reach as soon as possible a just decision which is based in our common principles. Thank you very much.
I should like to thank the distinguished representative of France and now invite the distinguished representative of the Kingdom of the Netherlands to take the floor.
Mr. President, I thank you for convening this emergency special session and for recognizing that these are extraordinarily trying times. Mr. President, we are shocked by the number of innocent lives lost and the suffering of many more people. Every civilian life is valuable and each civilian casualty is one too many. Our thoughts are with all the victims, Israeli and Palestinian and their families. None of us can even imagine the scale of the humanitarian challenge in Gaza. There’s an urgent need to secure safe and unhindered humanitarian access. Food, water and fuel, including for hospital generators, must be allowed in immediately as well as medicines for the many that humanitarian pauses in the fighting are urgently needed to make this possible and to save lives. And funding is needed, as also follows from the UN’s urgent appeal for more international assistance. The Kingdom of the Netherlands has already stopped its humanitarian response. We have immediately committed an additional 25 million euros for urgent humanitarian relief, 8 million euros of which is for UNRWA and comes on top of our annual contribution of 19 million euro. Mr. President, we would also like to pay tribute to UN staff and all humanitarian workers that continue to do their work under extremely difficult circumstances and offer condolences for the staff that lost their lives while doing so. We all need to work to prevent this conflict spreading even further and we call for restraint by all parties. This is not a time to put fuel on the fire. We’re also worried about the situation in the occupied West Bank where settler violence is aggravating an already tense situation. The Palestinian Authority is working to maintain stability and deserves our full support. Mr. President, we are grateful to Jordan for their efforts to introduce a resolution that gives voice to so many of the grave concerns shared by us all. We welcome the strong condemnation of all acts of violence against Palestinian and Israeli civilians, the call for immediate humanitarian access, the demands for provision of essential goods and services to civilians throughout the Gaza Strip, as well as the demand that all parties comply with international humanitarian law and international human rights law. These messages have our full and strong support. Still, we have decided to abstain on the resolution because important elements are in our view missing from the text. First, following the terrorist attack by Hamas, we support Israel’s right to defend itself, a right that needs to be exercised in line with the principles of proportionality and necessity. And second, the immediate release of all hostages is an utmost priority and is insufficiently reflected in the resolution. Also, we prefer to look at existing UN mechanisms first rather than call for the creation of a new mechanism to ensure protection of the civilian population. Mr. President, the mere thought of this situation spiraling further out of control is frightening. We must urgently address humanitarian needs, we must urgently break the cycle of violence and we cannot give up on peace and on the two-state solution. We all know that a common perspective on sustainable peace and security for Israelis and Palestinians alike is the only way forward. I thank you.
I should like to thank the distinguished representative of the Kingdom of the Netherlands and I now invite the distinguished representative of Bulgaria to take the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bulgaria is gravely concerned with the rapidly deteriorating humanitarian situation in Gaza and calls for continued rapid, safe and unhindered humanitarian access and aid to reach those in need through all necessary measures including humanitarian corridors and pauses for humanitarian needs. We underline the importance of ensuring the protection of all civilians at all time in line with international humanitarian law and deplore all loss of civilian life. However, we must also recognize that the heinous and indiscriminate terrorist attacks of Hamas across Israel, which we condemn in the strongest possible terms, brought unimaginable suffering of civilians. The use of civilians as human shields by Hamas is a deplorable atrocity. We call for the immediate and unconditional release of all hostages. There is no justification for terror and Israel has the inherent right to defend itself in accordance with international law and international humanitarian law. Unfortunately, the resolution that was just adopted falls short of recognizing that and for those reasons Bulgaria abstained on it. The priority now is to prevent further escalation of the conflict. The international community should invest more efforts in creating a real political horizon for a solution through intensive outreach and clear messages. We remain committed to a lasting and sustainable peace based on a two-state solution and the relevant resolutions of the UN Security Council. Must be made clear that there cannot be a military solution to the Israeli-Palestinian conflict. The only way towards just and sustainable peace is returning to the peace process and taking it forward. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Bulgaria for her statement and I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Norway.
Norway voted in favor of the resolution just adopted. We commend the Arab group for its efforts to act in good faith and search for a compromise on some of the most sensitive issues. We would like to highlight two important elements that we wanted to have included in the resolution. First, Norway voted in favor of the amendment proposal introduced by Canada. We regret that the amendment was not as part of the resolution. Norway has unequivocally and strongly condemned the terror attacks by Hamas in Israel on 7 October. We have also condemned the taking of hostages and we demand their immediate and unconditional release. Second, we would like to reiterate that Israel has a right to defend itself against armed attacks by Hamas. We emphasize in this regard that self-defense measures must be necessary and proportionate. Despite these shortcomings, Norway decided to vote in favor of the resolution in its entirety. This decision has been made in light of the gravity of the situation on the ground, in particular regarding the humanitarian catastrophe we see evolving in Gaza, as well as the importance of advancing a joint international message at this critical juncture. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Norway and now invite the distinguished representative of Israel to take the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today is a day that will go down in infamy. We have all witnessed that the UN no longer holds even one ounce of legitimacy or relevance. This organization was founded in the wake of the Holocaust for the purpose of preventing atrocities. Yet, the spectacle we just saw proves beyond a doubt that the UN is committed sadly, tragically, not to preventing but ensuring further atrocities. Israel just endured the largest massacre of Jews since the Holocaust and according to a majority of the so-called family of nations, Israel has no right to defend itself. Entire families and communities have been exterminated by genocidal Hamas jihadists whose sole goal is to annihilate the Jewish state. There is no reasoning with evil like this. There are no talks or discussions to be held. We saw exactly what they dream of doing to every Israeli and Jew and we will not sit idly by to let them rearm and commit such atrocities again. We won’t, just as every single other member state in this room wouldn’t. Israel has the right to defend itself and the realization of this right is to ensure that such atrocities are never repeated. The only way, the only way to ensure this is the eradication of Hamas’ terror capabilities, the only way. Yet this resolution does not even name Hamas, as if this war started on its own, not once. Even when discussing our hostages, the drafters could not even bring themselves to name the Hamas terrorists responsible for this blatant war crime, not even once. It is the duty of this body to call out murderous terrorists by name, not hide them behind empty words. Why are you defending murderers? Why are you defending terrorists that deliberately beheaded children and abducted babies? What is going on here? This must make each of you ask yourselves what the true aim was when this resolution was submitted. Was it to bring about a solution or was it to tie Israel’s hands from defending itself? Distinguished representatives, Israel’s goal is to eradicate Hamas’ capabilities for the sole purpose of preventing future atrocities. We all know that if given the chance, Hamas and Hezbollah would commit the October 7th massacre again and again and again until there is not a single Israeli left to murder or a single citizen to terrorize and drive away from Israel. And the only way to destroy Hamas is to root them out of their tunnels and their subterranean city of terror. Hamas has embedded itself deep within and under the Gazan civilian population. Just today, Israeli intelligence unequivocally proving that Hamas’ main operating base is located inside and underneath Shifa Hospital in Gaza, home to thousands of patients and medical staff. The people of Gaza are being exploited as human shields for terrorists. Why, why are you not holding Hamas accountable? Seventeen years of Hamas’ indiscriminate rocket fire on our civilians from which to defend itself to Hamas so Hamas can light us on fire. The drafters of this terrible resolution have shown that, according to them, the most reliable source for accurate information is an ISIS-like terror group. Israel is closely monitoring the humanitarian situation in Gaza and we know that there is no humanitarian crisis in accordance with international humanitarian law. Trusting the reports coming out of Gaza is exactly like trusting reports from ISIS. Does the international community trust information provided by ISIS? Does it trust numbers provided by Boko Haram? Of course not. So why is Hamas, a savage terror group, no different than ISIS or Boko Haram, trusted? How can you choose to believe such distortions? Every single Gazan ministry is run by Hamas. It is all affront for Hamas. Every official statistic is the word of genocidal terrorists. For example, the fact that UN officials and some of you are still parroting Hamas’ lies about what happened at the El-Ahli Hospital is a true disgrace. It was proven with absolute certainty that it was a Palestinian Islamic Jihad rocket that hit the hospital parking lot and that the number of casualties is far lower than Hamas’ reports. Yet, you continue to echo these lies. Shame on you, shame on you. The truth holds zero importance in this body, zero. Today, the majority of the international community has shown that it prefers to support the defense of Nazi terrorists rather than support the law-abiding state of Israel to defend its civilians. Anyone who is truly interested in preventing violence shouldn’t vote for resolutions protecting terrorists and whoever truly wants to prevent more violence should be calling on Hamas to lay down their arms, turn themselves in and return all hostages and the war would end immediately, immediately. This is a dark day for the UN and for mankind. Mr. President, Israel will continue to defend itself. We will defend our future, our very existence by reading the words of Hamas’ evil so that it can never threaten anyone else again. Israel will use every minute at our disposal to accomplish this mission. Israel will do what must be done to eradicate Hamas’ capabilities and bring the hostages home and we will bring them home. home, and we will bring them home. Thank you, Mr. President.
I should like to thank the distinguished representative of Israel for his statement, and now invite the distinguished representative of Ghana, of Suri, India, to take the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. In a world where differences and disputes should be resolved by dialogue, this august body should be deeply concerned at recourse to violence, that too, when it happens on a scale and intensity that is an affront to basic human values. Violence as a means to achieve political objectives damages indiscriminately and does not pave the way for any durable solutions. The terror attacks in Israel on 7th October were shocking and deserve condemnation. Our thoughts are also with those taken hostages. We call for their immediate and unconditional release. Terrorism is a malignancy and knows no borders, nationality, or race. The world should not buy into any justification of terror acts. Let us keep aside differences, unite, and adopt a zero-tolerance approach to terrorism. Mr. President, casualties in the ongoing conflict in Gaza are a telling, serious, and continuing concern. Civilians, especially women and children, are paying with their lives. This humanitarian crisis needs to be addressed. We welcome the international community's de-escalation efforts and delivery of humanitarian assistance to the people of Gaza. India too has contributed to this effort. Mr. President, India is deeply concerned at the deteriorating security situation and astounding loss of civilian lives in the ongoing conflict. The escalation of hostilities in the region will only exacerbate the humanitarian crisis. It is necessary for all parties to display the utmost responsibility. Mr. President, India has always supported a negotiated two-state solution to the Israel-Palestine issue, leading to the establishment of a sovereign, independent, and viable state of Palestine living within secure and recognized borders side by side in peace with Israel. For this, we urge the parties to de-escalate, eschew violence, and work towards creating conditions for an early resumption of direct peace negotiations. We hope that the deliberations of this assembly will sell a clear message against terror and violence and expand prospects for diplomacy and dialogue while addressing the humanitarian crisis that confronts us. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of India for her statement, and now invite the distinguished representative of Ghana to take the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ghana is gravely concerned by the situation in the Middle East, triggered in the latest instance by the Medros outrage caused by Hamas on 7th October 2023 in southern Israel, including continuing to hold as hostages those abducted, and the impact of the response of Israel, which has created a humanitarian nightmare in Gaza. We understand the moral dilemma Hamas has created for Israel and the Palestinian people, but Hamas is not the Palestinian people, and we appreciate the recognition by Israel that its actions must be guided by international law and the responsibility to protect civilians. We have a responsibility as an international community to help end the heartbreaking tragedies that have brought tears, hate, revenge, and a cycle of despair to those caught up in the violence visited on Israel and Palestine. That is why Ghana has worked with other members of the Security Council, including Brazil as president of the month, to find a consensual resolution in the council that responds to the pain and fear of Israelis and the safety, security, and well-being of Palestinian civilians. That is also why we think that out of this tragedy, we must find the fierce agency to support the two parties, Israel and the Palestinian Authority, to resume peace agreement so that there are two nations, Israel and Palestine, will live side by side within secure and recognized borders. We voted for the draft resolution submitted by the Arab group, not because it met the comprehensive set of elements necessary for a balanced text. We did so because we cannot turn away from the unfolding humanitarian disaster in the Gaza Strip. We cannot ignore the real threat of a regional war involving many actors inside and outside the immediate theater of conflict, and we cannot squander the impetus within this organ to seriously push for the resumption of negotiations on the two-state solution. We are pleased that we had the opportunity to vote on the amendments condemning Hamas and calling for the immediate and unconditional release of all hostages held by that group. Those who arm groups whose actions endanger the lives and statehood of Palestine must reconsider if that support is indeed in the interest of the people of Palestine. We call on all, including Israel, to take action to restore the authority and legitimacy of the Palestinian Authority. We are convinced that until the Israeli-Palestine peace treaty is signed, the goodwill of the Palestinian people is the best guarantee for true security. We call on Israel as a gesture of goodwill to declare voluntary truce to enable needed humanitarian services to be provided to the people of Gaza and to give space to genuine steps that address its legitimate security concerns, including the immediate and unconditional release of the hostages and a durable peace. We equally call on all those with influence over Hamas to encourage them to commit to the peace negotiations and an end to the campaign of terror. I thank you for your attention.
I should like to thank the distinguished representative of Ghana for her statement, and now invite the distinguished representative of Algeria to take the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Algeria voted in favor of this resolution because we are convinced of the importance of uniting our efforts on the international level to achieve our common goals and to carry out the necessary measures so as to end the suffering of our brothers and sisters in the occupied Palestinian territories, in particular due to the recent aggression that has been carried out over the last few weeks by the occupying power. This aggression, which continues to increase, to expand, and the losses of life are something that we must acknowledge, the tragic situation in the Gaza Strip. We must first state that we disassociate ourselves from any term in this resolution which aims to place the responsibility for this massacre on the Palestinian people. The occupying power is the only responsible for this carnage and for these violations of international law. Secondly, my country dissociates itself from any language that would give any type of legitimacy to this aggression against the Gaza Strip. We once again condemn the massacres that were perpetrated against the Palestinian people, and we call on the international community to unite, to end this bloodbath, and to provide the necessary protection to the Palestinian people. Thirdly, we deplore the suppression of the language referring to ceasefires. From a political nor moral point of view, can we oppose a ceasefire? Ceasefires are not a choice but an absolute necessity so as to end this ethnic cleansing that the Palestinian people are facing today and due to the current humanitarian situation in the Gaza Strip. Fourthly, we are not pleased that there are not enough references to accountability. We call for the Israeli power to be held responsible before the appropriate authorities. We must bolster the Security Council's responsibilities to maintain international peace and security on behalf of all UN member states in accordance with Article 24 of the UN Charter. The Security Council cannot continue to be silent when women and girls are being killed every day in the Palestinian, occupied Palestinian territories. In conclusion, we wish to reiterate our support to our brother people of Palestine in its fight for its legitimate fight, for its rights to establish an independent state with East Jerusalem as its capital. We call on the international community to guarantee the rights of the Palestinian people because this is the only way to ensure peace and security in the Middle East. Thank you.
I should like to thank the distinguished representative of Algeria, and now invite Switzerland to take the floor.
President, on the 7th of October Hamas carried out unjustified and shocking terrorist attacks against the civilian Israeli population. Switzerland condemned these attacks with the strongest, in the strongest terms, in the very earliest hours. We supported the resolution that was submitted by Jordan to this assembly. Nevertheless, the accountability of the Hamas terrorists is also important for us. This is why we also supported Canada's amendment. We regret that the unjustified and shocking terrorist attacks by Hamas and a call for an immediate freeing of the hostages was not included. We call for an immediate, lasting, and sustained humanitarian pause which would lead to a cessation of hostilities. This resolution is essential. We must ensure that the rapid and unfettered access is given to humanitarian aid for the region because the humanitarian situation is catastrophic, in particular for the millions of displaced, million people who are displaced. Today, faced with the degradation of the situation in occupied Palestinian territories, including East Jerusalem, this is crucial. We also believe that the resolution expresses the deep commitment of many UN member states to international humanitarian law, international law and human rights. We reiterate that the international humanitarian law takes into account both humanitarian regulations and the rules of combat which must be respected, including distinction, precaution, and proportionality when carrying out hostilities. Switzerland is committed to a unified action by the Security Council and will continue to do so. Finally, we must not lose sight of the fact that the only way to establish peace and security is the two-state solution, two democratic states, Israel and Palestine, living side by side in peace within these safe and recognized borders, as this assembly has called for for decades. Thank you.
I should like to thank the distinguished representative of Switzerland, and now call upon the distinguished representative of Czechia to take the floor.
Mr. President, Hamas's terror has plunged Israel and Palestinian territories into a new spiral of violence in which civilians, both Israelis and Palestinians, are suffering gravely. Many lives have been lost, homes, hospitals, and schools have been damaged. Hamas has embedded itself in civilian communities and is using innocent civilians as human shields. But even wars have rules, and the effort to protect every civilian life lies at the very core of them. All civilians must be protected at all times in line with international humanitarian law. Mr. President, Czechia has condemned in the strongest possible terms the appalling terrorist attacks in which, in just one day, on the 7th of October, Hamas and other terrorist groups slaughtered over 1,400 men, women, and children. We have all seen the horrific accounts of these barbaric crimes. There's just no excuse, no justification for these atrocities. Over 200 people abducted and held hostage by Hamas must be released immediately and without any preconditions. We are unequivocal in our support for Israel's right to defend itself and its citizens against this terror and to protect its territory in line with international law. Mr. President, the humanitarian situation in Gaza has reached a critical point. The population is in urgent need of food, water, and medicine. We welcome the opening of the Rafah border crossing and the initial entry of essential aid. We support the calls to step up the delivery of the urgent humanitarian assistance while ensuring it is not abused by terrorists. The risk of spread of the conflict further to the region is imminent. An escalation of the conflict puts at risk the positive dynamics that the region has been working on. We commend the tireless diplomatic efforts to de-escalate the situation and to prevent the Hamas-Israel conflict to spiral into a regional war. To that end, actions that incite violence and escalate the conflict, as well as any support to the terrorist groups such as Hamas and the Palestinian Islamic Jihad, have to be rejected. Mr. President, the resolution this General Assembly has just adopted contains many points that we support as an attempt to address this complexity. However, the resolution fails to condemn the terrorist attacks by Hamas on the 7th of October. There's no call for the unconditional release of all hostages taken by Hamas. The resolution fails to recognize Israel's right to defend itself and its citizens against terrorism. Last but not least, it doesn't provide assurances that the delivery of the urgent humanitarian assistance is not abused by Hamas and other terrorists. If we are not clear about the need to stop terrorism, we are not making progress towards the desired peace in the Middle East. For these reasons, Czechia decided to vote against the resolution. Mr. President, despite the current burst of anger and division, we believe that the majority of Israelis and Palestinians prefer the path of peace, not war and terror. Czechia is firmly committed to a two-state solution, which remains the only vital perspective to ensure Israel's security and to fulfill the Palestinian desire for their own statehood. Both Israelis and Palestinians deserve to live in peace, security, and dignity. I thank you.
I should like to thank the distinguished representative of Czechia, and now invite the distinguished representative of Peru to take the floor.
President, Peru voted in favor of the draft resolution presented by Jordan and also for the amendment presented by Canada, unfortunately rejected since we were not able to achieve within the Security Council the necessary consensus to offer a solution to a conflict which increasingly claims more and more human lives. It is therefore up to the General Assembly to have the responsibility of directing recommendations for the adoption of collective measures within the framework of the resolution propeace union. The text that we adopted contains fundamental and necessary elements for an immediate truce which would lead to a cessation of hostilities, the release of hostages, the protection of the population, and the quest for a just and lasting solution which would allow both states, Palestine and Israel, to live in peace within secure borders mutually agreed and internationally recognized in accordance with the international law and relevant United Nations resolutions. I must reaffirm that Peru... I must reaffirm that Peru categorically condemns any terrorist act such as those perpetrated by Hamas against Israel on the seventh of October. At the same time, Peru considers that it is a moral and legal imperative to respect international law, in particular international humanitarian law, in order to guarantee the protection of civilians everywhere without distinction based on creed or nationality. And this position of principle is one that has, that will continue to guide our action within the United Nations. Thank you very much.
I should like to thank the distinguished representative of Peru and now invite the distinguished representative of Germany to take the floor.
Thank you, Mister President. Today was a difficult day for the General Assembly. I thank Jordan for its work and take the opportunity to explain our vote. On seventh of October, Israel fell victim to an unprecedented terrorist attack carried out by Hamas. Many civilians have been killed, injured, or kidnapped. For almost three weeks now, Hamas has continued launching rockets against civilian targets in Israel. You can hear the cry in Israel where families mourn their loved ones, killed, maimed, tortured, brutally abducted by Hamas terrorists. For Germany, Israel's security is non-negotiable. Hamas must unconditionally and immediately release all hostages, stop its indiscriminate rocket attacks, and refrain from using civilians as human shields. Like any other state in the world, Israel has the right to defend itself against terrorism within the framework of international law. Mister President, addressing the plight of Palestinians in Norway contradicts this clear and unwavering stance. We also hear the cry of parents in Gaza mourning and fearing for the lives of their children. The humanitarian situation in Gaza is getting direer day by day. Germany calls for continued, rapid, safe, and unhindered humanitarian access and aid to reach those in need through all necessary measures, including humanitarian corridors and pauses for humanitarian needs. Mister President, we believe that the draft resolution tabled by Jordan for the Arab group rightly underlines the pressing humanitarian needs of civilians in Gaza and calls for humanitarian access. On the other hand, in our view, the text has major flaws. It falls short of explicitly condemning the terrorist attacks by Hamas and calling out Hamas responsibility for killing civilians, taking hostages, and indiscriminately firing rockets against civilian targets. We therefore thank Canada for tabling an amendment that clearly names Hamas responsibility and suggests more unequivocal language. Germany has therefore supported the Canadian amendment and deeply regrets that it did not get the necessary majority. Germany abstained on the resolution before us. Mister President, in the UN, we speak the language of international law, of humanity, of peaceful coexistence. This is what unites us. The rules of the UN Charter and international humanitarian law should guide our work towards a meaningful peace process, allowing both Israelis and Palestinians to live side by side in peace and security in two independent states. We must all step up our efforts to this end. I thank you.
I would like to thank the distinguished representative of Germany and now invite the distinguished representative of Singapore to take the floor.
Thank you very much, Mister President. Singapore voted in favor of this resolution after very careful consideration. We deeply regret that this resolution has two glaring and significant omissions. First, it makes no mention of Hamas's role in perpetrating the massive and coordinated terror attacks which led to the brutal killing of one thousand four hundred Israelis and others, and the abduction of more than two hundred hostages. These are acts of terror that we condemn unequivocally, and the abhorrent deeds of Hamas cannot be justified by any rationale whatsoever. We reiterate our call for the immediate, unconditional of all civilians taken hostage. Secondly, this resolution does not acknowledge Israel's legitimate right to defend its citizens and territory in compliance with international law. As with every country, Israel has a right to defend itself from heinous terrorist attacks, to protect its people from senseless violence, and to keep its territory secure. Mister President, nevertheless, Singapore supported this resolution because we have always been a consistent advocate and defender of international law, the UN Charter, and the rules-based multilateral system. This resolution reaffirms all parties' obligation to respect and uphold international law, including international humanitarian law. It expresses strong support for the efforts by the Secretary General of the United Nations and for his calls for the immediate and unrestricted access of humanitarian aid and to respond to the most basic needs of the Palestinian civilian population amidst the unfolding humanitarian crisis in the Gaza Strip. It demands that all parties immediately and fully comply with their obligations under international law, including international humanitarian law, and these obligations have been spelled out in many UN Security Council resolutions. All innocent civilian lives must be protected. I thank you for your attention.
I should like to thank the distinguished representative of Singapore and now invite the distinguished representative of the Philippines to take the floor.
Thank you, Mister President. The Philippines notes with grave concern the recent escalation of hostilities in the Middle East. We condemn the killings, terrorist attacks, and other acts of violence by Hamas that took place in Israel on the seventh of October twenty twenty-three, and in this regard acknowledge the right of Israel to self-defense in accordance with the UN Charter. We mourn the loss of innocent lives and extend our sympathies to all the affected civilians in Israel and the Palestinian territories. We deeply regret the violation of international humanitarian law which has imperiled the safety of civilian populations. In light of the alarming state of civilian casualties, we call on all parties to respect international humanitarian law. We express concern at the massive destruction of health and medical facilities that further increases unnecessary human suffering. The ongoing conflict deeply concerns us with its broad and profound impact on countless innocent civilians, including Filipino nationals and their families. Joining the call of the international community, the Philippines strongly urges the swift release of all hostages. We call for the end of the taking and detainment of individuals, particularly women and children. We reiterate our plea to the international community to come together and provide essential humanitarian aid and support to the affected. Most importantly, we urge all concerned to immediately put in place urgent solutions that would prevent the conflict from further escalating, spreading, and protracting. The Philippines supports the efforts of the United Nations to deliver urgent humanitarian assistance and essential supplies to Palestinian civilians caught in the midst of the conflict in the Gaza Strip. We commend UNRWA, UNOCHA, and other related UN agencies for their efforts and sacrifice amidst this challenging times. The Philippines lends its full support to calls for ensuring the safety of civilians seeking refuge in UNRWA premises across Gaza. We welcome the opening of a humanitarian corridor with Egypt as it is important that the UN humanitarian system be supported and is enabled to respond to the scale of the needs of the affected populations in a predictable and sustainable manner. We are also hopeful for a solution to be reached in the soonest possible time in order for the Rafa crossing to start receiving foreign nationals, including our Filipinos still in Gaza. We also continue to support UN peacekeeping missions in the region. We believe that the multilateral approach is crucial in addressing the crisis and preventing further escalation. The Philippines urges the Security Council to endorse and support coordinated efforts with UN entities for the safe evacuation and protection of migrants in conflict zones. We earnestly appeal to all parties involved to cooperate in safeguarding their security. With approximately thirteen thousand, thirty thousand Filipino nationals in Israel and a farther one hundred thirty in Gaza, their safety and well-being remain paramount to us. Reaffirming our position, the Philippines firmly supports a two-state solution consistently aligned with past international agreements and relevant UN resolutions. Both Israelis and Palestinians deserve a future where their rights, aspirations, and security are recognized and upheld. This enduring Israeli-Palestinian conflict remains a pivotal determinant for the peace and stability of the region. A lasting resolution can only be achieved through comprehensive dialogues and negotiations anchored firmly in international law. The Philippines ardently urges all parties to elevate dialogue as the primary tool for a peaceful and lasting resolution. Mister President, following the inability of the Security Council to act on many resolutions on the crisis brought to its chamber, it is now incumbent upon the General Assembly to take action, do the utmost to bridge the divides, and champion the path to peace. The resolution, ES ten slash L dot twenty-five, as adopted today, includes many elements which the Philippines supports. Notably, it condemns all acts of violence against both Israeli and Palestinian civilians. It calls for respect for international humanitarian law, access for humanitarian assistance to address the large-scale needs in Gaza, and immediate and unconditional release of innocent civilians being held captive. It also reaffirms our longstanding support for a two-state solution with a safe and independent Palestine and a secure Israel living in peace. Overall, it expresses the grave concern of the international community over the situation which the Philippines genuinely shares. We concur with all victims and their families and pray for a peaceful resolution of this conflict. However, as we would condemn all terrorist attacks, the resolution does not mention nor condemn the terrorist attack of seven October by Hamas, leading to the death of innocent civilians, including women and children, as well as some Filipinos. Because of this attack, we recognize Israel's right to self-defense as provided for under Article fifty-one of the UN Charter reflected in the resolution. Therefore, despite commendable efforts of the cost sponsors to improve the original text, for these reasons, my delegation abstained on the resolution. Thank you, Mister President.
I thank the distinguished representative of the Philippines. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the Republic of Korea.
Thank you, Mister President. The Republic of Korea voted in favor of the amendment put forward by Canada and then abstained on the resolution proposed by Jordan, especially because the Canadian amendment was not adopted. We believe that the language condemning Hamas and calling on an immediate and unconditional release of all hostages taken by Hamas are essential elements that should be included in the resolution. Let us be reminded that the rapidly deteriorating situation in Israel and Gaza commenced with the brutal terrorist attacks by Hamas. The Republic of Korea condemns in the strongest possible terms these unjustifiable terrorist attacks. We believe that all states have the right and duty to protect themselves and their citizens in compliance with their obligations under international law, including international humanitarian law. Mister President, we have already witnessed over eight thousand fatalities on both sides, most of whom are civilians. The death toll is rapidly increasing. Even at this very moment, innocent civilians are losing their lives. Civilians should not, should not be a target. Taking this opportunity, I'd also like to convey my deepest condolences to the families of the fifty-three UN humanitarian workers who have been killed in Gaza since the beginning of the fighting on the seventh of October. Irrespective of nationality, gender, age, ethnicity, and war faith, all civilians must be protected. It is extremely painful to bear witness to more and more civilians, especially women and children, suffering immensely because of this conflict. All parties to conflict must abide by the rules under international humanitarian law, including the principle of distinction. In addition, the rapid, unimpeded, and sustained passage of humanitarian aid must be allowed. We urge the establishment of pragmatic measures, including humanitarian pause and humanitarian corridor. Time is of the essence as we stand on the edge of the precipice of a humanitarian catastrophe. We urge the relevant parties on the ground to continue all diplomatic efforts to facilitate rapid, safe, and unimpeded delivery of humanitarian assistance for innocent civilians. Mister President, enmity among states and widespread hatred among people, these are what extremist groups in the region desire. We cannot and must not allow this. Our common humanity simply must prevail. My delegation would like to stress that this situation must not spill over to other parts of the region. Such spillover benefits no one. Thus, all major players in the region should continue to exert their redoubled diplomatic efforts to de-escalate this conflict. Mister President, protecting civilians and preventing spillover must serve as our guiding priorities at this fragile moment. However, in addition, we all know that the issue of Israel and Palestine is not something that started on the seventh of October. It has been going on for decades. That is why it is crucial to establish a durable peace solution to end these repeated atrocities and break the cycle of violence. The Republic of Korea believes that sustainable, lasting peace in this region can only be achieved through sincere negotiations based on the two-state solution with security and dignity for all. The current catastrophic situation also reminds us in the most poignant way of the urgent need for sincere dialogue to discuss, contemplate, and hammer out every, every aspect related to this extremely complicated issue with the long-term goal in mind. We strongly believe that even during this bloody and inflamed juncture, all diplomatic channels among relevant countries and parties should actively continue to operate behind the scenes. I thank you, Mister President.
I thank the distinguished representative of the Republic of Korea. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Ireland, speaking on behalf of a group of countries.
Thank you, President. I have the honor to speak on behalf of the following states that have voted in favor of this resolution: Belgium, Luxembourg, Slovenia, Spain, and my own country, Ireland. We have supported this resolution as it addresses a step that must be implemented with the utmost urgency in order to protect civilian lives and increase the provision of humanitarian aid. At the same time, we emphasize that this resolution does not At the same time, we emphasize that this resolution does not comprehensively reflect our position. In particular, we wish to reiterate our condemnation in the strongest possible terms of the brutal terrorist attacks by Hamas that took place in Israel starting on the seventh of October twenty twenty-three. There is never any justification for terrorist attacks against civilians in any circumstances. We strongly condemn the taking of hostages and demand their immediate and unconditional release. We regret, therefore, that the amendment tabled by Canada failed to be adopted. We strongly emphasize Israel's right to defend itself in line with international law, including international humanitarian law. We fully support the demand in the resolution that all parties comply with their obligations under international law, including international humanitarian law and international human rights law. We additionally emphasize prohibitions under international humanitarian law of the taking of hostages and of the use of civilians as human shields, and the requirement to avoid, to avoid locating military objectives within or near densely populated areas. These are serious violations of the rule of law, which put civilians at unconscionable risk, risk. We fully support calls for humanitarian pauses and humanitarian corridors. We underline the urgent need to secure sufficient and unhindered provision of essential goods and services to civilians throughout the Gaza Strip. We underline the importance of allowing full, rapid, safe, and unhindered access for all humanitarian organizations. We commend UNRWA and other UN organizations and humanitarian actors for their selfless work in support of the people of Gaza and across the Middle East, and we offer our condolences to those who have lost their lives. It remains of utmost importance to restore a political horizon. The resolution we have just adopted makes it clear. We reaffirm that a just and lasting solution to the Israeli-Palestinian conflict can only be achieved by peaceful means, based on the relevant United Nations resolutions, and in accordance with international law, and on the basis of the two-state solution. We support the attempts include a Peace Day effort aimed at reviving a political process on the basis of the two-state solution that meets Israeli and Palestinian security needs and Palestinian aspirations for statehood and sovereignty. We urge all partners to redouble efforts to foster consensus and promote meaningful engagement to this end, and we regret that the UN Security Council has not been able to pronounce itself on the situation. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Ireland. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the Syrian Arab Republic.
Shukran. I thank you, Mr. President. At times like these, yes, as this meeting is happening, we are receiving news that Israel has indeed launched a barbaric ground offensive against Gaza. And this, of course, will leave behind large numbers of civilian casualties that are unimaginable to us. Israel even cut off communications and internet in Gaza, hoping it would be able to cover up for its barbaric crimes against the sisterly Palestinian people. How will some Western countries, with the United States at the lead, how will they, after giving us migraines with their calls for human rights, how will they justify this crime? This barbaric attack can in no way be justified by what these countries describe falsely and unjustifiably Israel's right to self-defense, Mr. President. The world has grown sick and tired of the hypocrisy and lies of some Western states today, and in another dark page in the book of Israeli crimes, we see the continuation of the bloody Israeli attack on Gaza for the twentieth day straight. The extreme, and the level of Israeli massacres has reached a level that's unimaginable. They have killed seven thousand civilians, most of them women and children. Not even rocks were spared. The Baptist hospital was bombed, so was the church, as well as residential areas, journalists, doctors, engineers, students, and even United Nations staff. Nothing has been spared in Gaza from Israel's barbarism. The other side of the ISIS terrorist coin, and a source of shame to some Western states with the United States in the lead, the United States that has offered them protection and impunity and given them a carte blanche for, so that Israeli fascists can kill the Palestinian people, preventing the Security Council from upholding this responsibility to put an end to this aggression and to put an end to the war crimes, the war, the crimes against humanity that Israel is perpetrating. Mr. President, our delegation voted in favor of the draft resolution that we just voted on at the General Assembly, because it primarily aims to stop the barbaric Israeli war machine. It calls for an immediate halt of this aggression and to delivery of humanitarian aid, rejecting the forced eviction of Palestinians. However, my delegation would like to express its reservation over some of the language mentioned in it, and that might be construed as equalizing the Israeli aggressor and the occupied Palestinian people between the murderer and the victim, between the killer and those being killed. In closing, we would like to renew, on behalf of Syria, our full support for the sisterly Palestinian people and the legitimate right and struggle that was guaranteed by international law and the Palestinian people's right to establish an independent state with Jerusalem as its capital. I ask that this statement be registered in the official record of this meeting. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of the Syrian Arab Republic. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of El Salvador.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. El Salvador would like to welcome the adoption of the resolution protection of civilians and upholding legal and humanitarian obligations, which we consider to be a concrete and tangible result of this emergency special session of the United Nations General Assembly. My country believes that the text recently adopted by this assembly is an urgent response and a balanced one, which is placed at the very core of this organization, and that is the protection of all civilians as well as the urgent provision of humanitarian assistance. President, El Salvador condemned and will continue to condemn all terrorist acts, whatever its motivation is and wherever it takes place and by whomever it is undertaken. We ask that we stop indiscriminate attacks as well as aggression against all civilians. We ask that we bring an end to human suffering and also to widespread destruction. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of El Salvador. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Tunisia.
Shukran. Thank you, Mr. President. Tunisia decided to abstain in the vote over the draft resolution because we believe that the dangerous and unprecedented situation in the Gaza Strip as a result of the continued Israeli barbaric onslaught on the Palestinian people and the closures and the prevention of all forms of basic life from reaching millions of Palestinians requires a much higher threshold and a clearer position. And despite the fact that this draft resolution does call for facilitating the delivery of humanitarian aid and preventing the eviction of Palestinians, however, it did not clearly and strongly condemn the crimes of war and the crimes of genocide that are being perpetrated by the occupying powers. Moreover, it does not call for holding accountable the occupier for its crimes. It did not clearly stipulate and call for an immediate halt to the aggression, and it also put the victim and the murderer on an equal footing. Therefore, we have continued our efforts to offer amendments. However, those amendments were only focused on giving the occupying powers more free rein in perpetrating their crimes. Therefore, we called for voting on, we were called to vote on a draft resolution that will only make things worse and will deepen the suffering of the Palestinians. And after the, therefore, we decided to abstain from voting on the resolution, and this is to uphold Tunisia's principled position, which refuses that the aggressor and the aggressed be treated equally and which stresses that there must be a clear condemnation of the aggression of the occupation against the Palestinian people. These are principled positions in our policy, and we do not allow for them to be dismissed in a resolution being issued in such difficult circumstances. We will continue our firm and principled support for the Palestinian people and their legitimate rights and for the establishment of the Palestinian state on their territories. We hope that United Nations resolutions that have exceeded one thousand are respected and implemented to put an end to the aggression and the, on the Palestinian people and their suffering and to put an end to the occupation, and so that things must be called as they are, because shelling hospitals and killing children and women and harming millions of innocent civilians and targeting houses of worship and houses of residence cannot be used as self-defense. Rather, this is a war crime, while the right to self-determination and the right to resisting occupation and rejecting discrimination, racial discrimination are now considered terrorism. We call the international community, the Security Council, General Assembly, to under, to shoulder their responsibilities and put an end to all of these mistaken practices and half answers. The Palestinian people must be allowed to enjoy the rights that will continue to exist, and they must also enjoy the protection that they deserve. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Tunisia. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Australia.
Thank you, President. First, Australia expresses appreciation for Jordan's leadership and sincere efforts in bringing forward Resolution L.25. We agree with the central proposition that the humanitarian situation in Gaza is dire and human suffering is widespread and unacceptable. Australia again calls for humanitarian pauses in hostilities so that food, water, medicine, and other essential assistance can reach people in desperate need and so that civilians can get to safety. However, we abstained with disappointment because we believe the resolution as drafted was incomplete. The resolution did not recognize that terror group Hamas is a perpetrator of the seven October attack, and Australia again explicitly calls for the immediate and unconditional release of hostages. Moreover, the United Nations Charter guarantees national sovereignty. We believe the General Assembly can affirm Israel's right to exist without denying longstanding and legitimate aspirations of the Palestinian people, including to statehood, aspirations which Australia supports. We can affirm Israel's right to defend itself while also saying the way it does so matters. It matters for innocent civilians who should not pay for horrors perpetrated by Hamas, and it matters for Israel's ongoing security, which would face grave threats if conflict were to spill over across the region. Aspirations for peace and security for Israelis and Palestinians will recede even further if today's generations are motivated by grief and resentment resulting from this crisis. This assembly of nations has no lesser duty than to seek to solve the insoluble and transform despair into hope. And despite disagreement on this resolution, efforts behind the scenes make clear that most member states are acting in good faith and want to chart a path out of this crisis towards a political process. That political process must end in a just and enduring peace in the form of a two-state solution where Israelis and Palestinians can live securely and prosperously within internationally recognized borders. That two-state solution must be the new reality that overcomes entrenched ideologies. President, achieving that reality calls for us to see each other's humanity. It requires all states and all sides to respect the right of others to exist, and it will require leadership, understanding, and courage. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Australia. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Sri Lanka.
Mr. President, thank you for giving me the floor. My delegation, Mr. President, voted in favor of the Resolution L.25 submitted by Jordan on behalf of the Arab, Arab group. Mr. President, the paramount need of the hour is the cessation of hostilities, the release of hostages, and enable the provision of humanitarian aid to those in dire need. The essence of the resolution presented by Jordan captures these needs adequately. It also captures the need to respect international humanitarian law and international human rights law. Furthermore, the resolution reaffirms that a just and lasting solution to the Israeli-Palestinian conflict can only be achieved by peaceful means based on the relevant United Nations resolutions, in accordance with international law, and founded upon the two-state solution. This is a position that Sri Lanka has consistently maintained. Mr. President, Sri Lanka condemns terrorism in all its forms and manifestations. That includes the terrorist attacks that took place on the seventh of October on the civilian population in Israel. The Jordanian resolution, however, takes cognizance of the seventh of October attack and, and the increase in violence since then, and condemns all acts of violence against Palestinian and Israeli civilians, including all acts of terror and indiscriminate attacks, as well as all the acts of provocation, incitement, and destruction. Accordingly, my delegation desisted from supporting the Resolution L.26, the amendment submitted by Canada, on the basis that the pit and substance of the Canadian amendment had been substantially captured in the text of the Jordanian resolution in the preamble paragraphs and particularly operative paragraph seven, which calls for the immediate and unconditional release of all civilians who have been illegally held captive and demands their safety, well-being, and humane treatment in compliance with international law. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Sri Lanka. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the Russian Federation.
Mr. President, distinguished colleagues, I wish to begin by congratulating all those members of the United Nations with the adoption of such an important and extremely necessary in these current escalating conditions resolution. This is not the victory of a national position. This is a position of common sense and justice and humanism. This is a clear reflection of the enormous concerns about the peaceful citizens of Israel and Gaza, that something that joins us altogether. This resolution is less than what we could and must do for them. Unfortunately, due to the position of Western delegations, the UN Security Council made a decision. In the General Assembly, the, the voice of all, all common sense members of the international community and Arab states was victorious, prevailed. Now, all, both states must listen. First and foremost, this comes, is about an immediate ceasefire, which must end the violence. This is of particular importance due to information which is coming in on a big, the start of ground operations in Gaza. It is unfortunate to note that our Western partners continue to remain silent on this issue and try to only see one side of this issue. Moreover, this approach is now being forced upon all member states. They believe that this does not respond to the